Okay, you gentlemen are in here, you're all set? Okay, the second application and tabled matters is the 1030 Jackson Road Northeast Quadrant Advanced Life Support, Nequal's Ambulance Building. This is located at 1030 Jackson Road. The applicant, Nequal's, is requesting a preliminary, final site plan approval for the construction of an approximately 11,000 square foot ambulance station on their existing two acre parcel with SBL number 18 as designated. And this is located in an R3 residential family district under section 22511 and 2288 of the code of the town website. Yes, sir?
I'm just getting my client on the phone.
Okay.
Hi Ahmed, I just wanted to get you on the phone so you could hear everything. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. How's it going, everybody?
How are you doing?
Good, good, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes. Just give your name and...
Yep. I'm John Scott, I am a civil site engineer with LaBella Associates. As mentioned, coming here tonight to request seeker determination as well as preliminary and final site plan approval for 1030 Jackson Road, new ambulance station. Again, approximately 11,000 square feet. Just to give a recap, we have five new ambulance bays, parking 27 spaces. This meets the client's needs during peak times.
I can't hear what's going on.
Can you hear?
Try to hold that microphone a little closer to your mouth, but if you take it out there, it'll ruin it.
Can you hear me now?
Is that better, Joe? Is that better, Joe?
Can you hear me now?
Hello, are you guys hearing all right?
Somebody, this is Mike, he was breaking up every other word, have him try it again.
Okay, I'll try to get a little bit closer to the microphone. Does that... Does everybody hear better now?
Can anyone hear me?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, I can hear the... I can hear the applicant now.
Okay.
Okay, you can hear him all right. Is everyone hearing him?
I can hear the phone.
Is everyone hearing him okay?
Dust.
Yeah, it's just breaking up a little bit.
Okay, is that better?
Okay, I'll try to speak a little bit louder. Okay.
Okay, give it a try.
Okay, so all stormwater for this property will be managed on site. Additionally, we're proposing a bio retention area and underground stormwater management as well as a water quality unit on site. To recap, the plan meets all town codes. We'd not be requesting any variances for this. As far as the last meeting went, like you mentioned, we were tabled. And since we have come from that last meeting, there's been a few changes that we would like to discuss. We shifted the building approximately 10 feet to the south, and that was in order to reduce the light spillage onto the adjacent properties and the property to the north. We added a few additional parking spaces over on the east side of the lot there.
Okay, let me just, just for the record, you know, the applicant currently is just showing the site drawing and where they're proposing to, where they have proposed and have completed changes, so go ahead. I just want that so that it's...
Okay, yes, correct. We eliminated the sidewalk along the west side of the building. We eliminated the digital signage along the building frontage. We tweaked the size of the bio retention in the rear of the building. Those were the site civil changes. Architectural wise, we had some changes to the west elevation of the building to make it fit more naturally in with the residential area. We added a double gable roof. We added some shutters along the west side of the elevation, as you can see here, that'll allow us to fit more in with the residential district. We added brackets to the dormers on that side, and we feel that those satisfied some of the major concerns that the neighbors had at the previous meeting. We also reduced the amount of glass that we had and some overhead doors to reduce light spillage onto adjacent properties. And we added two emergency egress windows on the second floor per comments from the PRC. So in addition to all these comments, we had addressed all of the PRC comments as well as agency comments, which included Monroe County Department of Transportation, Monroe County Department of Health, Monroe County Water Authority, as mentioned, the PRC comments, Monroe County Planning and Development, and the Monroe County Survey. And we've responded to all town engineer comments to date. So with that, as mentioned previously, we're requesting a seeker determination and preliminary and final site plan approval tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, this was, this has been in for a while back now. And again, this was a preliminary, this is a preliminary hearing. And we do have a bunch of comments. You've addressed the PRC comments and so on, so we're good with all that. There were a few comments from the county, which you've addressed those, you've given us written comments back on those. We've received several different comments from neighbors. And, gosh, we can go through them all, but we're not going to be able to read them all, but I will acknowledge that we did receive the comments. Some are giving negative effect in nearby home values. These are no factual determinations, this is opinions. Quality of life, safety issues, you've addressed that. There's one from a gentleman, like to urge the board to table the proposal for the facility this type at this time. It will prove to be unwise approving this. We are currently in a pandemic. No one could have predicted when this is over, procedures in the medical field will change, hospital, emergency rooms, urgent care centers, and procedures for first responders will all be different. Some will be internal upgrades, some will be mandated by local, state, and federal authorities. Building a facility that will need to be retrofitted later will be costly. I don't know what the gist of this is supposed to be, but that's like saying, I'm going to put up a firehouse and next week they're going to change the rules, but it's there, you know? And we understand, I mean, we, believe me, folks, that we've gone over this with the different boards and conversations and so on and so forth. This project is a good project. The concern of going from 6,000 feet to 11,000 feet, they are not asking for variances. It totally is within bounds of the district. The district is one letter, one of the comments was, "The zoning was changed." No, the zoning was not changed. There's a lot of errors and a lot of misconceptions in these letters. We went through everything at the last meeting. We addressed all, and we had people, you know, neighbors addressing their concerns, and they were all addressed at that point. Now, I'm going to go back to the point of why are they here and why we didn't approve it that night. So having gone back and reviewed all the minutes from the planning board meetings when they were in previously, the determination was, number one, we closed the public hearing. The speaking portion of it was closed. That's done. We'll still address a couple of the comments here. But the meeting itself for speaking was closed. Now, the reason we had to table it at that point was because there were several comments presented to the applicant at that time that was, that were not able to be fully addressed properly. And that's what they've now given to the town in written form. So those comments have all been addressed currently. How much further we can go with this thing? I mean, it's, I know that people just don't want it, but you know, again, the other side of the coin, nobody wants it in their neighborhood, but when somebody needs them, they want them to be there. All comments were addressed, and a couple of different ones, well, they did address that anyways. These are the things I wrote down earlier. The curb cut from the county, you obtained that.
Correct.
Needful drainage, you did that. The elevations, paperwork from the DEC, that it was not a stream. You've submitted that?
Yes, we will submit everything to the DEC, which will include the SWIP and obtain the MS4 acceptance form from the town at that appropriate time. We did go back and determine that. We submitted a letter to the environmental agency that indicated that it's a non-determined stream, and that it was on an outdated map at that point. We discussed that at the last meeting.
Well, let's take this and we'll see where it goes. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for taking my call. I'm the neighbor to the north of the property.
Okay.
Richard, Richard Chavestee at 1022 Jackson Road.
Sure, 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 Richard, yep.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate your comments and the work that I see that has been done there. Since that time, I do have one question that is still of a concern that hasn't come to light yet.
Okay.
And that's, and the question is, the driveway that, the drive that is closest to the north side of the property, that is closest to my property at 1022, currently, it does not, it does not connect to Jackson Road. In other words, it's, it's a driveway for the side of the building, correct?
Correct.
That would be correct?
Yes.
Yes, that would be correct then, yes.
Okay, my main concern is that, because I've lived there 30 plus years and I've seen many things on this property, and I know the usage is different, but my, I have a concern about, let's say in the summertime and the unit is returning, many times vehicles have driven across, in other words, they exit Jackson Road and to save time, they might drop, not using the driveway that's built for the facility on the south side. And in other words, they would take a shortcut and cut across the property, across the grass and/or, very similar happened when the Ukrainian club was owned by the VFW next to Light Hall, that, next to the Ukrainian club's entrance. I believe the town requested that they put up a small berm. There's three trees, I think three trees and a berm, if you're facing that, that run to the left side, because cars were pulling in and out of the Ukrainian club years ago on both sides. My biggest concern is that, that whatever the town does in moving this, in this project moving forward, that there be no allowance, that it should be part of the record, that they shouldn't be allowed to add or to connect that driveway to the north, that that should not ever be allowed. It should be part of the record that it cannot connect to Jackson Road is my point. That would be one, and I prefer to see some sort of a berm with trees on the north side of the property to help prevent people in the summertime when the grass is hard from taking a shortcut with a vehicle.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Cutting across.
Okay, we got you. Okay, good, Richard. Is there something that's...
Okay, and I, you know, um...
The state only approved it, correct?
The rest of it sounds like, um...
The county's...
Appreciate the work that was done, not totally trumped with the rest of it, but I, but I appreciate it. But that's, that's a big concern that you address, that the idea of not having access to Jackson Road or people ever cutting across.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it, Richard. Thanks for the call.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I guess he's talking about where they were, they were cutting across coming into there.
Yep.
Isn't there a berm or something? There's landscaping, I know it...
Reposing landscaping as a purpose here, so that should address his concern about, about light spillage from this property onto the new ambulance station.
Okay. And then, okay, back where I was, I know there were some comments the last time, I think, and you had just Ellen Rye, one of the neighbors over Pepper Ridge, she wanted some elements such as shutters and so on, and you have included those, so...
Correct, along the west...
That's been put in. One of the other comments that I personally had was, that was right from the day one, was no digital sign, so that's going to be a separate issue. You're going to pay with a separate permit for that, right?
Correct. There's no, there's no digital signage, as we removed that as part of the previous...
So you're saying, okay, so what is their regular sign? Is that something you're putting to the table right now, just coming in as a separate?
So we have a signage on the building, which is right here, but it's not going to be digital, it's just, it's only going to have like a flub.
Is that the one that's on the building?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's nothing out at the road? Okay, that, okay, the neck conforms, so that meets the requirement for square footage for the sign, right, in the front there?
Mm-hmm. That's the only sign, you have no monuments?
Nope, no monuments.
Uh, let's see, what else did I have? Another concern was traffic, and again, you've addressed that, and I just had notes that I had written down a couple of weeks ago. That's basically that, isn't like a factory, so there's not traffic in and out constantly all day long anyways.
Correct. Monroe County DOT has seen the plans and they've approved them.
The other thing I have is changing the lights. I think we mentioned that the last time, the elongated lights you had by the doors?
Yeah, we angled this down.
So they've got lit lights?
We have the dark sky compliant fixtures of the lighting, so...
All right, they need to respond to the PRC, you did that? That was the main reason for tabling the meeting. That's all I've got here right now, so, again, there were some comments, the comments have all been addressed here as far as I'm concerned. And we will, we will keep the emails, letters that we did receive, we'll put those in the record. I don't want to read them all because they're just, they're lengthy, and we have, we have reviewed them.
They were shared with all the board members.
Yes, and they were, that's right, too. And these, they've all been shared with the board members, all, all seven members have received copies of these too, so... Now, if there is anyone, any of the board members, any of you fellows have a comment or anything that we've missed? Just, if you have, just, you know, just... Gotcha. No one? Okay, somebody's on this phone, let's get this, we'll see who this is. Good evening.
Hi, this is Ellen Rye, I wanted to call about the planning board discussion.
Hi Ellen, how are you?
Good, thanks, how are you doing?
I'm good.
Yeah.
We...
Are we able to comment?
Oh, absolutely, sure, go ahead. I, you know, I just, matter of fact, I just mentioned your name here because we did, I remember you had a comment, you wanted some, some...
Yeah.
Elements put in, and they did do that, so that was good.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Mm-hmm.
So one of the things that we are concerned about as neighbors is the increased number of cars and ambulances that will be coming in and out.
Mm-hmm.
It's the increased number from the original proposal. And I wonder if there was a traffic study done with Jackson Road based on the amount of traffic that will be coming in and out of the, of the ambulance property and the amount of traffic on Jackson.
No, based on the report that we got from the county, if I can find it, do you have it with you there?
I don't have the report.
Their concerns, Monroe County didn't have a real concern over, with, with traffic?
Correct.
With added traffic from this, from this operation being there. That's basically all they had to, that's all they gave us.
So for preliminary approval, were they required to do a traffic study?
No, just a, just a, what we needed to have from them was a review from the county saying, was there an issue? And their response basically is, it's not an issue, there's no amount of traffic that caused an issue for them to respond to.
Was that from the original approval, preliminary approval, or from the current proposal with a larger number?
That's the one we just got, I just had it in front of me.
With the 27 cars and five times more ambulances?
Yep.
And four times more employees than the original proposal?
Well, yeah, but see, that's all, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but it's, there's not, I'm looking for, oh, here it is, right here. Public agencies, financial, town. Their concern more was with disturbing 1.6 acres, square acres, proposed disturbed area, if it's greater than one acre, provide a copy of the proposed NOI and MS4 SWIP's acceptance form. That was all the concern was.
And was there any discussion about including sidewalks on Jackson Road? There is a lot of foot traffic and bike traffic.
You know what, Ellen, I would agree with you 100% with that. That's something that has to go up with the county, but that wouldn't have anything to do with this application. That's something that...
I think that is a safety concern.
Oh, I do too.
Now with the foot traffic and the bike traffic, and now with, you know, ambulance passing vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
I think that is something that the town should raise with the county.
That's something...
You know, because this is not...
That could, you got a good point. That's something we can talk about and see. That's something that maybe the county should be looking at. Where they stand with moving, you know, spending money now is probably another story, but I agree with you 100% with, with the sidewalks and bicycle paths.
And so that's not something that you would include as a condition for approval to be implemented by the applicant?
No, because that's, they're not, they're on the road, but they aren't anything to do with, with the highway itself. That would be the Monroe County Department of Transportation that would have to be the ones to deal with that. I don't really, can't honestly say I know what the procedure would be to do that. Maybe, maybe the commissioner could contact the county and see what they say.
Most sidewalks are usually installed by the municipalities, not by this county. The county generally doesn't do that.
Yeah.
They worry about the roads, they're worried about trying to move cars.
What I'd recommend you do is call Jeff during the day.
Sure.
Uh, Jeff who?
Jeff Benway.
He's with the town?
Yep, he's the Commissioner of Public Works.
872-7027.
872-7027. I'm even going to give his number.
Okay.
We'll put him on the...
Another aspect that the neighbors are very concerned about is the sirens, of course, you know, waking us up in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Being that we purchased residential property and at the time, there was no commercial properties that would normally be allowed in our residential area until the zoning changed in 2011, and that's a concern that we have.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's changing the quality of our residential community by allowing this use. And so we want some assurances from the town that the ambulance company is going to live up to their promises that they've made as far as not using lights and sirens unless absolutely necessary to get out of their property. This is what I know Ahmed said several times in the past, that they would not use lights and sirens until they got to an intersection. I wonder what kind of assurances that we can require from a company like this to live up to those promises with the neighbors?
What we can do, you know what we'll do with that, Ellen? It's a good point. And these things were, you know, again, you're reiterating things that were brought up. Why don't we, why don't we do this? I'd be more than willing to put this right into a resolution, that there's no sirens until they've reached the intersection unless absolutely necessary. Is that okay? That's the best we can do.
That would be great.
Okay?
Actually, we, I don't think...
I know in other communities that lights are covered in Seaport.
Any clause with...
Hold on a second, Ellen, hold on a second, the engineer's saying something, go ahead.
They would be required by code to, to use their sirens, and that was discussed at the last meeting.
Not when they're pulling out, only when they get to the intersection.
Yeah, and I can, you know...
Yeah, we'll just, we'll put it into resolution, just the same thing, but even though that is the law.
It is a code thing, so yes.
Okay.
Again, that would, that would have to...
All right, that would be, that is an absolute requirement anyways, but we will put it in there anyways, okay?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the person that was speaking.
What he was saying was, he was saying was, that's one of their rules, that they cannot put the sirens on until they reach the intersection. So that would be a requirement.
And you're going to put it in?
We'll put it in a resolution also.
Do we have that reassurance?
Yep. Just back it up a second.
I'm right, I just...
Right, no, I know.
Thank you.
That, we're hearing from the client, that is law, that, that cannot be put into the resolution because that's a law. And that was, again, discussed at the last meeting, so...
So Ahmed is saying that...
That's a state law.
Okay, so it's a state law, so then we're good with it, that's it, they are not allowed to do that.
They're not allowed to use the sirens to get out on Jackson Road?
That's correct.
In their way?
That's correct.
I don't think that's what you're saying.
That's correct.
You cannot commit, if they're not doing it until, Richard, when the lights come on, the sirens come on, they cannot commit to that, that's a, that's a state law.
Okay. All right, so we're covered with it.
Again, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Ahmed. He's saying that they will not be using the sirens or the lights until they reach the intersection with Ridge and Jackson?
Incorrect, no. When the lights come on, the sirens come on, that would be before the intersection, that's a state law.
So that means then, basically, the way the law reads, the lights, if the sirens go on, if the lights go on, the sirens go on. That would happen with them pulling out of there.
They would, they'll make their best effort, however, that is a, that's a state law, so as soon as the lights come on, the sirens go on, and it is, as soon as they pull out.
Okay. I guess it'd be very similar to a fire, fire department then, when the vehicle pulls out. Yeah, he says they'll do their best to eliminate that as much as possible, but they can't guarantee that, because if it's an emergency call, the lights go on, the sirens go on.
So probably to get out of Jackson Road, in, in most of the times that they're pulling out, they will need to use both lights and sirens?
Would they be using them most of the time pulling out on the Jackson Road? Yes, that's a hard call to say though, Ellen, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I guess that's where the neighbors are saying, that it's so explanatory that this use is not compatible with residential neighborhood.
Yeah, we got, we got, okay, I don't want to go back into history, but we went through all that, no, I understand. Those were all things that we did address, so I, the more I can go on that. All right, Ellen, that's all I can do.
Oh, oh, one more question.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, actually two. The, um, the other communities, Seaport and Brighton, for example, have a special stoplight at their intersection where they can, you know, as soon as the call comes in and the bay door goes up, that activates a light, a stoplight, so the traffic would be stopped. Therefore, the ambulances don't need to use the lights and sirens. Is that something that we could consider here?
Again, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Would they put a light that when the garage door goes up, that a signal light would go on outside? I, I don't know, we don't even have that at the fire departments.
It's locked for, if an emergency vehicle's got its flashers on, law says pull over, so...
I guess, I think, I think Ellen, the only I can say here is, they will be abiding by what the laws are, that's all, I mean, whatever they totally are, that's their line, so they'd have to abide by that. Okay, Ellen, look, I've got a million things going over here tonight, so...
One, one, one last question.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, with the, uh, original proposal, the lot was not large enough to accommodate the ambulance building. And so then the ambulance company purchased the parking lot from the adjoining Ukrainian club.
That's correct.
Uh, so now my question is, is the Ukrainian club then still compliant? They've done, now they're a smaller size, uh, property?
Yes, yes, my understa, my, I know where you're going, yes. My understanding is, they leased a portion of that back to the...
Ukrainian club.
Ukrainian club, for their parking. Piece of...
So they have the...
So they, they both now meet the requirements for land.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your hearing our concerns, and I am still not happy with the approval, but I'm sure that's where we're headed, so thank you for listening.
Well, I appreciate you calling, good, good, good talking to you, Ellen, again.
All right.
Been a while, we'll see you later, bye-bye. Okay. We're good with that. What else do we have? I will put these, so you do, I'm repeating now, but we did receive all the emails from the neighbors, I think she addressed several other ones that have actually been in writing also. So I'm good with all this. Okay, the gentleman on the phone here, are you folks okay with everything, or is there anything you need to bring up? to bring up? Anybody have a comment? No. Okay, then you want to move forward with this? You're okay with moving forward? Hope I didn't put you guys to sleep already.
Yes, I do.
You guys are all set with it, then? All right, then.
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. There we go. Now I'm hearing you. All right, then, let's move forward with it. We have to do a seeker at it. They're here for preliminary and a final. So Derek, are you willing to do a prelimi-, or do a seeker? Will you run this?
Yeah, motion for an implicit action. Town Wester Planning Board consider request by applicants northeast quadrant, advance no support, E-class constructed approximately eleven thousand square foot ambulance station on an existing two-acre parcel having SBL numbers zero eight zero point one seven dash three dash one four point two located at one zero three zero Jackson Road. The planning board determined that the proposed action is an implicit action under part six seventeen of the State and Urban Quality Review Regulations. The planning board determined that the action is subject to a signature review pursuant to part six seventeen point six B one of secret or is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore has a negative top re agency for the proposed action. The town board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance, etc., according to section six seventeen point seven C one of secret, and has when considered the information contained in the shortened urban assessment form, part one dated January sixth, two thousand twenty, and to consider public comments directed at the planning board during the public hearings on February sixth, two thousand twenty, and today, and three, completed part two in the urban assessment form. May I therefore be resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action is subject to its, the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of non-determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharge of the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for the action. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information and evidence above, referenced supporting documentation, with discussions of the action that the Town of Webster Planning Board has documented by these managers of the treaty, that the proposed action will not result in a significant environmental impact. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved that the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on these above reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidenced of its determination.
Okay, thank you, Doc. We have a motion. Mark, would you want to second that?
I'll have a second, yes.
Okay, Mark, second some motion. Okay, and let's go through Dave Arena.
Aye.
And Derek Anderson. I'm, I'm sorry, Derek Mixel.
Aye.
And John Kozel.
Aye.
And myself, I'm okay, too. So we're good with that. All right, a motion now for preliminary. Well, I, I might, I've got paperwork here. I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for the ambulance station at ten thirty Jackson Road in Webster. And this is based on drawing number C two zero one. And we'll, first off, for the record, that all written comments received by the town are entered into the file for this application. And also, let's see, we've got all that in there. I've got those set there. Okay, good. So with that, I make a motion that we make this project subject to all PRC comments, which the applicants have addressed, subject to a letter of credit posted with the Town of Webster, subject to, uh, let's see, no variances, any lands, nothing transferred. Let's see, address any recent subdivisions, nothing there. All the improvements shall be constructed. Okay, so Catherine, for you, so we've got number one, then number eight, all the improvements shall be constructed according to the specifications. The Town of Webster, road reconstruction to be in accordance with the specifications, regulations set forth by the Town of Webster, all site work to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. You are preserving mature trees where possible. Let's see, you've got all your landscape drawings. Let's see, comply with nonrequirements of state, county, and town agencies. Applicant to address drainage, lading, signage, landscaping, buffering, burning, and snow storage, which you have done. In that light, right there, we do have a, the proposal for a sign, that is going to be placed on the building as designated in their drawings. Let's see. Landscaping, landscaping sites, accessories, and associated finished grading designs for the development must be prepared by New York State Licensed Landscape Architect. And again, the approvals are subject to drawing C two oh one. And that would be a motion. So I would need a second. Derek Mixel, would you want to second that?
Aye.
Okay, we have a second. Let's see, Dave Arena.
Aye.
Derek Anderson.
Aye.
Derek Mixel.
Aye.
You, yeah, okay. John Kozel.
Aye.
And Mark Jardina.
Aye.
And myself. Okay, so we're good with preliminary approval for the project. All right, for final approval, again, just reiterate, we do have all documents that were received by the town. Notice, and again, the public notice was published in the, in the Webster Herald as required. And so for final approval, we'll make it subject to all the PRC comments. We'll make that subject to all preliminary approval conditions, and make that subject to all governmental fees, subject to the Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction for the project shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on May fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And the conditions of final, preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover page of the final design plans. The engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all the work was completed as per planning board resolution of final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. Let's see, a letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's certification inspection, stormwater facilities. I've got a question. That stormwater, that's, that was all underground anyways, wasn't it?
Uh, correct, yes.
That was self-contained in there, so that would be...
Yes.
So stormwater facilities constructed first, subject to the resolution of final approve minutes, and approvals are subject to the drawing number, again, is C two zero one. So that's a motion for final approval for the new ambulance station at Jackson Road. So need a second for that. John Kozel, you want to second that?
I'll second that, Tony.
Okay. So Dave Arena.
Aye.
And Derek Anderson.
Aye.
Derek Mixel.
Aye.
And Mark Jardina.
Aye.
Okay, and we're covered with that. Okay, so we've completed the new ambulance station, finally. We're good. Good luck with it, fellas.
Great. One, one last thing. Given the urgency with the COVID, we're looking to start site work on this as soon as possible. Wondering if the board would entertain starting the site work without a building permit?
No, I don't know if you can do that.
All right, cool.
The reason we can is this board isn't authorized.
No, we would be...
Outside of the code. Code requires a building permit, and they have to follow it.
Okay.
But I don't know what's the status of the building permit? They can be issued, can't they?
Have the plan's been issued to the, to Rat, Potter?
Um, I don't believe so, yet, no.
It's, I mean, he gets them done in about a, you know, one to two weeks, so.
Okay, we'll get that in as soon as possible.
So you endorse as soon as you can start construction. We'll have to establish a construction meeting as well.
Okay, we'll get that in as soon as possible. Yep.
All right, good luck.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, fellas. Take care now. Okay, we got that one going.